Good evening. Today is Monday, April 1st, 2024. We will now call the City Council Regular Meeting to Order at 6:30 PM. Item number two, our roll call, we do have a quorum of council. Item number three is our pledge, will be led by Dylan O'Neal. Dylan, come on up. Come to the microphone.
For the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Have a seat for a second. We have item number four, our presentations and recognitions. Four A is a proclamation recognizing National Community Development and Fair Housing Month. We have a proclamation that will be presented by Councilmember Jeffrey Alboni. Sorry.
Thank you. How y'all doing this evening? All right, y'all can do better than that. How you doing this evening? All right, great. I am Jeffrey Alboni, councilmember here in Missouri City, Texas, and I'm honored to deliver a proclamation on today in honor of two things. And so I want to ask our Development Services Team, particularly the CDAC, that handles our Community Development Block Grant Program to come on up. Let's give them a round of applause. And do we have any members of our CDAC Committee here today? Our Community Development Advisory Committee? Okay, no? Okay, all right. Well, the Community Development Block Program is a federal program that the City of Missouri City is fortunate to be a part of. We get a direct allocation from HUD, HUD, excuse me, the Housing and Urban Development Initiative, and we're excited that we're able to use those dollars, those federal dollars, to impact so many lives here in Missouri City, Texas. And so to talk about that, I want to hand the mic over to Ms. Marissa Morgan, who handles our Community Development Block Program Program.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is a great pleasure to be able to help the citizens of the City of Missouri City. We have several programs that are funded by HUD. One is my favorite, it's called the Housing Rehabilitation Program, and we have applications throughout the year, as well as our scholarship program, which is ongoing right now. The deadline for application processing for that or submittal is going to be April 10th. If anyone has any questions, please go to our website and please put in the search bar, Housing Rehab, and it'll bring you right to me.
All right. Jennifer, you want to share any?
Well, after we do the proclamation, we're going to just talk very briefly about fair housing.
All right, great. All right, so I'll run through this proclamation, but this is a very, very important direct allocation that we received from the federal government. And as was stated, we provide scholarships, we do housing rehabilitation, we also have four bin meals on wheels, where we provide or help meals on wheels, provide meals for seniors, et cetera. So many programs that we do through this program, and we're excited to offer this here in Missouri City. So whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, implemented the Community Development Block Program in 1974, my birthday, to provide local governments with the resources required to primarily meet the needs of low and moderate income persons. And whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program is among the few remaining federal programs available to address the needs of low and moderate income persons. And whereas since 1998, the Community Development Block Grant Program has provided the City of Missouri City, Texas, with important and flexible assistance to meet the needs of low and moderate income residents by funding infrastructure improvement projects, code enforcement, public services, including assistance to seniors, scholarships for educational expenses, and home repair assistance. And whereas the City of Missouri City, Texas acknowledges the critical value of the Community Development Block Grant Program and the significant projects that rely on its funds for support. And whereas the month of April 2024 has been reserved for recognition and appreciation of the Community Development Block Grant Program and Fair Housing Month. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Alboni, on behalf of Mayor Robin J. Alakat and on behalf of the City Council and Citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Community Development Month and Fair Housing Month in Missouri City, Texas. And now we'll talk briefly about fair housing. You going to do it there? Okay, all right.
Mayor, council, this will be free, but because it is Fair Housing Month, a part of the city's commitment to receiving certain funding requires the city to reaffirm its commitment to fair housing. Just so for the public, want to go through what that means. As stated, month of April is Fair Housing Month. Fair housing means that every person has the ability to live free from discrimination. Fair housing is Title VIII of the 1968 Civil Rights Act, as Councilmember Boney just read in the proclamation. And it's also part of the Texas Fair Housing Act. What's listed on the screen are areas that are protected from discrimination. So when we say we're furthering fair housing, we're saying that we, as a community, as a city, are committed to prohibiting discrimination in housing because of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, or disability. These are a few examples of what discrimination looks like. Discrimination could be refusing to rent or sell property to an individual. It could be different terms for an individual related to property sales or property transactions. It could mean discrimination in how a property is appraised in value. This is a local case of a city in the state of Texas that experienced a fair housing complaint. And this primarily has to do with their codes and regulations as adopted. So when we talk about furthering fair housing, we're talking about what regulations the city has adopted and are enforcing that are committed to that same goal. And so here you see what the complaint against this Texas city was and the penalties that were assessed when the city was found to be liable for not preventing or furthering fair housing. Again, the city is committed to furthering fair housing and our commitment to receive any federal and state grant. That grant does not have to be specific to housing, does not have to be specific to community development. But because we award, we're awarded and we receive state and federal grants, this is part of that commitment. These, again, are examples of the way the city can further fair housing, reviewing our codes and ordinances and decisions and activities, education of the public, which is what this represents as well, in ensuring that the city is making every effort to further fair housing within the city. We're partners with HUD, we're partners with the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, the National Fair Housing Alliance, and we're also partners with Texas Workforce Commission, which in the state of Texas has a role to play in receiving complaints related to fair housing or discrimination in housing. And so I just want to say for the public, if they do have a situation where they feel as if they're discriminated against, they can provide that in writing to the Development Services Department, Community Development Division, and that information can be forwarded to HUD and also the Texas Workforce Commission. And that's what we have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have another proclamation for Fair Housing Month. We're also going to have Councilmember Jeffrey.
You get to see me again, y'all. All right. I'll try to be brief. Before I read this, though, and in line with what Jennifer just read and talked about, I had a recent encounter with a resident of the city who made it a point to come to me and tell me how much money they pay in taxes based off of the value of the house that they have and how much they contribute to the City of Missouri City. And while I thanked them for being not only a resident, but for all of the taxes that they pay to make Missouri City better, help us make Missouri City better, I also reminded them that there were individuals who are not in the same position, that have needs, that may be retired, that are living on a fixed income, that are seniors, that rely on programs like this, and that are also taxpayers in most cases to the City of Missouri City. And so without fair housing programs and without a city that's focusing on fairness and equity, not only our housing, but also on all services, then we'll find that some of those people would get lost and forgotten. And we don't want that to ever happen, do we? All right. So whereas equality is the cornerstone upon which a just civilized society is built, and whereas equality requires that discrimination and unfair barriers in housing be removed, and whereas President Lyndon B. Johnson in 1968 signed the Fair Housing Act into law protecting an individual's ability to own or rent property free from discrimination, and whereas the state of Texas in 1989 passed the Texas Fair Housing Act, which prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin, family status, or disability. And whereas the City of Missouri City, being one of the most diverse cities in the state of Texas, promotes fair access to housing and equal opportunity in housing and fair housing practices. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey Alboni, on behalf of Mayor Robin J. Alakat and on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month in the City of Missouri City.
All right, thank you. Item 4B is another proclamation for Autism Acceptance Month. We have a presentation by Lynn Clauser, Mayor Proton.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. If you're wondering why everyone has on blue, if you have on blue, would you please stand up? If you have on blue, would you please stand up? All right. So City Manager Jones had asked at last month for everyone to wear blue in honor of what used to be Autism Awareness Month and is now Autism Acceptance Month. So thank you, if you have on blue, thank you so much for honoring Autism Acceptance Month. You may be seated. So this month, we want to present a proclamation to our Parks and Recreation Department, if you all will come on up. And this is in honor, everybody in our Parks and Recs Department, come on up. And let's give them a hand. Anytime we have all the exciting activities that go on, it's not because of us on council. This is the Fun Squad. This is the Fun Squad. So last year, our Parks and Rec Department became the very first certified autism center in Texas, correct? Texas, yes. And there's only one other center in the, yeah, in Arizona. So we consider that to be very special, the first. And so what that means is that all of our staff members are trained on how to engage with individuals with autism. And if you come to some of our events, you will see a sensory area, which is really, that's a big deal. A lot of families can't take their kids to places where there is a lot of noise and a lot of chatter, a lot of lights. And so what our team does is they try their best to be inclusive. And so for that, we are appreciative. And for that, I'm going to present you all with a proclamation in honor of Autism Acceptance Month. And it reads, whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, approximately one in 36 children in the United States is diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder, representing a significant increase from previous years. Whereas early diagnosis, intervention, and access to appropriate support services are crucial for improving outcomes and quality of life for individuals with autism and their families. Whereas the economic impact of autism is so significant, the total cost of care annually for individuals in the U.S. is estimated to exceed $268 billion, highlighting the need for increased support and resources for affected individuals and families. Whereas the City of Missouri City is committed to supporting its residents with autism spectrum disorders and their families by promoting awareness, acceptance, understanding, and access to necessary resources and services throughout this community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Protim Lynn Clauser, on behalf of Mayor Alakat and the entire City Council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby recognize the month, the month of April as Autism Acceptance Month in Missouri City and encourage all residents to increase their understanding and their acceptance of individuals with autism spectrum disorders and to support local autism organizations. So this we're presenting to you all. Thank you all. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Thank y'all, thank you.
Next, we have item 4C is a recognition, recognizing Dylan O'Neal. We have a presentation by Lynn Clauser, Mayor Proton.
So many of you may or may not know, autism is near and dear to my heart. I have a son who just turned 19 on the spectrum. And this month, I seek to recognize individuals, organizations that are doing their part in our community. This month, I decided to take a little turn. There is an individual in our community who you all saw earlier give the pledge. His name is Dylan O'Neal. Dylan, would you come up? Y'all, let's give Dylan a hand. I have personally known Dylan since he was six years old. And he and my son were in school together. And Dylan is a young man living on the spectrum, and shall I say, thriving on the spectrum. I wanted to recognize Dylan today because he is an extraordinary individual who has defied the odds for autism. And let me read you a few things. You already know this stuff, but I'm going to read it to them. Dylan O'Neal is currently a senior at Ridgepoint High School, an A honor roll student, and has received the Academic Excellence Award each year of high school, taking mixed AP and dual credit courses. Dylan O'Neal is actively involved in extracurricular activities while demonstrating academic success, and he participates in the Ridgepoint High School Film Club, Volunteers for Lunches of Love, Attends Ignite, which is a high school Bible study. He works at Harvest Methodist Church as a facility assistant and holds a part-time job at Chick-fil-A Sienna Crossing. And I see Mr. Tony Levine here, his boss. Dylan has also written a novel called Alternate Aftermath, and he's currently writing his second novel. We celebrate Dylan today, and we honor his most recent and outstanding accomplishment, being accepted to the University of Texas in San Antonio in the Honors College, where he plans to study architecture. We also celebrate Dylan's recent scholarship award, which was a surprise, of $2,500 granted by Chick-fil-A Sienna Crossing and the owner and operator Tony Levine and the management team. Y'all, I can't say enough about how important it is when you recognize autism to not ignore the signs. Because his parents, who are living here, and his sister that's living here is living proof that when you put the work in, this is what you get. You get an individual who thrives on the spectrum. So today, Dylan, I want to present this certificate to you, and you can, you can hang this in your college dorm room and show off in front of your buddies, because I bet you they don't have a certificate from their city. So you can hang that. And then we also have a gift for you to celebrate you and honor you today for your achievements on behalf of the City Council and the staff and everybody here in Missouri City. So what I'd like to do is I want to bring your parents up. Renee, Brian, and Elise. Elise is his sister, she's on the mayor's youth commission. So we've got a very involved family here. And I'm gonna I'm gonna, I'm gonna let mom and dad say a few words.
I'm on the spot. I concur with what Lynn said. Early intervention is so important. If you feel like something's not right, you need to talk to your doctors and get involved quickly. Go through the grief and denial as fast as you can, because even if you don't know what it is, there's help. Therapy, so much that you put in at the early stages can really make the difference in their lives. Brian and I decided a long time ago that it may cost a lot of money. Back then, they didn't even think that ABA was therapy. They called it, what was that word that they used before they approved it? I can't think of it right now. But yeah, they weren't approving it, and by they, I mean insurance. We decided to spend the money then because we wanted to give him a we said, we'll spend the college money now so that maybe he gets to go to college later. So this is a dream come true. And we'll deal with all the expenses later, like everybody else does. But he's going to college, and he's going to make it. And
So I want to bring his boss up, and he would probably not call him his boss, his leader. Come on up, Tony. Tony Levine, when he applied for his job, Renee said, Lynn, do you mind if I use you as a reference? I said, by all means, please do. And so he's one of his star employees, they are staff members there. So thank you all for being here, Dylan. We want updates. We know you're going to do well, and we all wish you the best. All right?
Thank you. I just, before we go into our next item, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, Tony Levine, with Chick-fil-A. I go through that, your drive-through at least once a week. And, and I've seen the work, yeah. I've seen the work that your youngsters are doing in that center. I've even noticed that one time, there was, I think, one person had one item that was missing. And I saw one of your employees running out in a panic mode because they wanted to make sure they get that. And every time, doesn't matter who's at that counter or who's at the drive-through, my pleasure. Thank you. Item number five, our public comments. Madam City Secretary, do we have any public comment requests?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we do.
Go ahead.
Eddie Sahad. Please state your name and address for the record, and also please adhere to the three-minute time limit.
Hi, everybody. Eddie Sahad. I live on 10862 Redstone Court, Missouri City, Texas, 77459, in Sienna. Honorable members of Missouri City, City Council, esteemed guests and fellow advocates for justice. Two weeks ago, we stood here to express our deep concerns about the dire situation in Gaza and our community's moral imperative to act. Today, we return to put our words to action. We, as a community, have carefully drafted a ceasefire resolution and gathered a petition of over 120 Missouri City residents in just a few days. Our resolution is more than a document. It's a manifestation of Missouri City's unfavoring commitment to human rights and equality for all. It represents our collective voice, a voice that seeks to transcend borders and touch the lives of those caught in the crossfire of a conflict that they did not start, especially the innocent children, women, and civilians whose plight we cannot morally afford to ignore any longer. In the fabric of our diverse community, who is in a unique position of having minorities as its leaders, we have a unique perspective of understanding the sting of injustice all too well and a profound understanding of the pain felt by others, even when it's across overseas. Our shared experiences of striving for justice and equality fuel our empathy for Gaza's suffering and reinforce our resolve to advocate for their rights and their well-being. The details in our resolution are born from a deep concern for human welfare. It calls for an immediate ceasefire and a united effort to address the crisis in Gaza. It is a plea for compassion, a plea for action, and a testament to our belief that indifference to suffering anywhere undermines our humanity everywhere. We are here, not just as residents of Missouri City, but as members of the global community to urge you, our esteemed City Council members, to embrace and endorse this resolution. By doing so, we affirm our collective conviction that peace is possible and that empathy can triumph over apathy. In the words of the great Dr. King, "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." To remain silent is to be complicit. To act is to affirm our shared values and our commitment to a world where every life matters and basic human rights and decency applies to all, no matter the race, no matter the religion, no matter the gender.
That concludes the three-minute time limit.
Thank you. Thank you for your attention and your time.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the public comments.
All right, thank you. Item number six, our staff report, 6A. We have the City Manager's Report, Angel Jones.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The one consent item tonight is an action that would authorize the city to negotiate and execute a lease agreement, lease purchase agreement, not to exceed $533,458 with ZOLAT Medical Services to purchase 11 cardiac monitors. Our current equipment has met the threshold and is in need of replacement. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number seven, our consent agenda, 7A. Consideration and possible action approved to City Council regular and special meetings of March 18, 2024. We have a motion by Councilmember Boney, seconded by Councilmember Emory. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item 7B, consideration and possible action to authorize the City Manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the lease purchase agreement.
The members just voted on that item as part of the consent agenda, so this current item is item 8A1, which is a public hearing to receive comments for or against proposed amendments to Chapter 14 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1, and Article 13 Substandard Structures.
Okay. Item 8, our public hearings and related actions, 8A is 8A1. Public hearing to receive comments for or against proposed amendments to Chapter 14 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1 in general and Article, what is that? 13 Substandard Structures. Jennifer Thomas Gomez.
Mr. Mayor, on the public comments, public hearing portion, there are no comments.
I'll open the public hearing for item 8A1.
Yes, sir, there are no comments.
Okay, if no comments, we'll go ahead and close, 8A1. 8A2.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Chapter 14 Buildings and Building Regulations, amending general provisions related to construction requirements and the implementation of international codes, providing a penalty, providing for severability, providing an effective date, and making other provisions related to the subject.
Mayor and Council, this is part of the package that was presented to you previously on the building codes. Specifically, these items relate to the general standards. So the amendments that are before you include regulations that can be applied to construction sites that provide additional standards that we can enforce that we currently don't have. That includes creating a fence, a security barrier around construction sites, also establishes timeframes around when construction activity starts upon the issuance of a permit, and then also cleans up registration for contractor registrations in terms of the dates. and then also cleans up registration for contractor registrations in terms of the dates that their registrations renew. So this had been presented previously. If there are any questions, please let me know.
All right, thank you. See a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Maruas. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item 8A3.
An ordinance of the City of, an ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas, amending Article 13 Substandard Structures, Chapter 14 Buildings and Building Regulations of the Missouri City Code, amending regulations regarding the abatement of dangerous and unsafe structures, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Jennifer Thomas.
And again, this was presented previously. The major change here is to establish the Construction Board of Adjustment as the board that can hear appeals and also hear, hold public hearings related to abatement of substandard structures. So that'll allow for a lot of flexibility and the ability to move those processes quicker.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Brown Marshall. Recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Thank you, Mayor. Jennifer, as it relates to that convening of the Construction Board of Appeals, is there a process in place as to when you are gonna call them and when they have to respond or make a decision or render it?
Right, and so the flexibility is because they're able to meet whenever an issue arises or comes up. So just like any of the other boards and commissions that don't have regular meetings, we would pull that board on their availability within 30 days of receiving that application, convene that board, and hold the public hearing, and then go through that process.
So 30 days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, within 30 days?
Within 30 days.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Boni, seconded by Councilmember Brown Marshall. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item number nine, our appointment, 9A. Consideration and possible action to appoint Danielle Wong to the Parks Foundation Board, Position 3, for an unexpired term and expiring June 30, 2026, and Jana Chambers to the Parks Foundation Board, Position 7, for an unexpired term expiring June 30, 2026, and Angie, I won't butcher your name, what is it? Well, you got it. Mayor Protem got this. Angie to the Parks Foundation Board, Position 8, for an unexpired term expiring June 30, 2026. Susan Soto to the Parks Foundation Board, Position 9, for an unexpired term expiring June 30, 2026. Crystal Rome, City Secretary.
Mayor Alikad and City Council, I would like to make one change to the slate. Susan Soto has resigned, or has pulled her application for a place on the Parks Foundation due to a possible conflict. And so Troy Carter would be the applicant for Position 9. Troy Carter, if Council so desires.
So there's been a motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall, seconded by Councilmember Mayor Protem Klausser. So Position 3 is Danielle Wong. Position 7 is Jana Chambers. And Position 8 is Angie. And Position 9 would be now Troy Carter.
That is correct.
Yeah. Recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Yes, I just wanted to make the correction to Angie, where's Bicki's name for the record? It's W-I-E-R-Z-B-I-C-K-I.
Thank you.
So there's been a motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall, seconded by Mayor Protem Klausser. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item number 9B, our consideration and possible action to appoint members to the Small Business Advisory Committee, Position 1, small business owner for an unexpired term to expire June 30, 2026. Position 8, small business owner for an unexpired term to expire June 30, 2026. Position 9, small business owner for an unexpired term to expire June 30, 2026. And Position number 13, a residential member for an unexpired term to expire June 30, 2026. City Secretary.
Yes, Mayor and Council, the following are applicants to serve on the Small Business Advisory Committee. There's Ebony Bowden, Rodney Washington, Christopher Serta, Michael Davis, Deborah Wingard, and Rosalyn Thomas. All applicants have gone through the new process that the Mayor and City Council have established, and the applications and scorecards and Spark interviews were sent to Mayor and Council on last week.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Klausser.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to propose filling these vacancies with the following, if Council's ready to receive that. For Position 1, Ebony Bowden. Position 8, Rodney Washington. Position 13, Deborah Wingard. And Position 9, Christopher Serta.
Okay. So you have Position 1, Position 8, Position 9, and Position 13, right? Okay, Councilmember, I see your motion by Mayor Protem. Councilmember Emery, is that your second?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, can we have any of the Parks Foundation and any Small Business Advisory Committee members that are in the chambers to stand up so we can recognize them? If you just got appointed to the Parks Foundation of the Small Business Advisory Committee, please stand up. Thank you all for being here, and congratulations.
Item number 10, our resolutions, 10A.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, approving submission to the Federal Management Agency of an application to the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Safety, Fire and Emergency Response Grant Program. I apologize, and containing other provisions related thereto.
All right, thank you. We have a presentation by Emilio Reyes, Division Fire Chief. Go ahead, sir.
No presentation. Mayor and Council, good evening. Here to answer any questions y'all might have.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Emery, seconded by Councilmember Riley. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Sorry, I wouldn't make you talk today. 10B, or 10B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, suspending the April 10, 2024, effective date of CenterPoint Energy Houston Electric LLC's requested rate change and providing other provisions related thereto. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. There is no formal presentation tonight related to this item. This is another request of you all to suspend the proposed rate increase for CenterPoint Electric.
All right, thank you. I've seen a motion by Mayor Protem Klausser, seconded by Councilmember Maruas. Seeing no one else on the queue, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item number 11, our council announcements. We'll go ahead and start with our large Position 1 Councilmember. Sonia Brown Marshall.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope that everyone had enjoyed their time over the Easter holiday weekend with their family and friends. I wanted to say a big congratulations to the Exchange Club of Fort Bend for installing their awareness fields. They do have two up, one located over here on Highway 90, just in between the Missouri City and Stafford line, if you will. And one is also located over at the Fort Bend County Courthouses. Volunteers, together with that particular club, installed over 2,192 stakes. And if you get an opportunity and you drive by and you see the white stakes with a blue ribbon hanging on it, those actually represent the number of reported child abuse cases in Fort Bend County over the last year. So April brings a lot of awareness for a lot of things, but April is also Childhood Abuse, Child Abuse Prevention Month as well. And I also want to say a happy 113th birthday to the National Exchange Club. I was honored to be in attendance at Fort Bend Exchange Club's meeting on last Wednesday. And we heard a stellar presentation from Wells Fargo Bank on Special Needs Trust. And those Special Needs Trusts can also be established for people with autism or whom are living on the spectrum as well. So it was extremely great information to hear. And if we have, and we know that we have those that are here, right here in Missouri City, that are, have family members that struggle with those needs, I encourage you, please reach out to Wells Fargo. They can set you on a great chart or path in order to get you set up with a trust. Had an opportunity to attend Fort Bend County's IFtar event. It was amazing. Made it to the Boots and Bling Affair, where Missouri City residents invited me out, who represent Eastgate and Naomi Eastern Star Chapters. And they raised a ton of money for scholarships, so that's always a great thing. Had a chance to attend the Fort Bend Chamber of Commerce Infrastructure Update, where our very own Angel Jones and Shashi took to the stage and they told Missouri City's story. And that was my first time getting a chance to hear our story pitched to developers and other stakeholders. And it was well received, and I was glad to hear and be in attendance for that as well. As far as the Economic Development Committee, my colleagues and I, we have been extremely, extremely busy. And just getting the word out on what's happening in our city around and meeting with different developers and getting an opportunity to really show them the show me state. We are now showing them, and we are definitely open for business. Herman Rodriguez, thank you. Thank you for the informative meeting on last week. It was very, very good. And those developers that are coming before us that want to, you know, engage us with doing business here, we welcome you. And that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Mayor Protem Lynn Klausser.
Yes, I want to thank everybody who wore blue today in honor of Autism Acceptance Month and the families and individuals that are living with this disorder. And I want to encourage each one of you to seek understanding for those who are differently able. Congratulations to our city manager, who was recently selected as an honoree of the 2024 Greater Houston Chapter of American Society for Public Administrators Public Leadership Award. Say that fast. We got word, I think it was last Friday, and I nominated her for this award. And this award is given to exceptional Houston metro area public officials who have served the public through either their leadership or public interface. And the award is presented during National Public Service Week. So we will join together to celebrate her and watch her get that award in May. And that is given through the University of Houston. So congratulations, congratulations again. I attended today the grand opening of McAllister's Deli along with Councilmember Boni and the mayor. There was a line wrapped around the building for free tea, one year of free tea. So we met the franchise owner who lives in Missouri City. So great showing today. I encourage you all to support. Saturday, I attended the sold-out Survive Her event, Breast Cancer Awareness Event. It's the first breast cancer event brought to Missouri City alongside a nonprofit in Houston Methodist. There was education, healthy eating, raffles, and zumba, and testimonies. And I learned a lot about breast cancers from the physicians who presented. So I want to thank Danielle, our IT and communications team, Jason, and city manager for helping to make this a successful event. I also attended the City Council Joint Parks Board Foundation Meeting. I was honored to emcee the Fort Bend County Literacy Annual Reading Between the Wines Event. It was a packed house, and we exceeded the goal. So thank you all, Fort Bend Literacy Council, for having me. I also attended the Edible Earth Foundation Festival. I attended the Lexington Elementary 30th Anniversary Celebration. And I also attended a special celebration for Chick-fil-A's Sienna Crossing Seniors. I was the keynote speaker, keynote, for the Missouri City Chamber of Commerce. It's an organization that was newly formed, it's not affiliated with Missouri City. But they asked me to be their inaugural Women's Day Retreat Speaker, and so I was that. And hopefully I did as well as you. I also attended the HOA biannual meeting. And I was a panelist for the Trailblazing Triumphs Women Making Their Mark and Purpose Driven Leadership Discussion for the NFBP A. And I've been busy, so I'm looking forward to getting a little rest for April. And that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you. Recognizing District 8 Councilmember Monica Riley.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, want to say Happy Good Friday. Hope everyone had a magnificent resurrection. Sunday, for Jesus Christ has risen. Had an opportunity to attend the Laying of the Stakes and acknowledgement of the April Bend Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month with Mayor Protem and the other keynote speaker, Jeffrey L. Boner, Boni, Councilmember. And so it was, it was a good and bad thing to see all the stakes out there, but to also, the good thing was, that number has come down significantly since the previous year. I think it was over 2,300 last year, and this year it's under 2,100, or just slightly over 2,100. Also had the unfortunate attendance to attend the balloon release for one of our Missouri City Young Residents, Keenan Gill, who was killed a few weeks ago in a shooting on, I believe it was the Tollway area. So please keep that, the Gill family in your thoughts and your prayers. Thank you to the police officers that came out, that they knew the family and were very supportive. Attended the collaboration with the Parks Foundation. Congratulations to our new Parks Foundation Board members and appointees on tonight, Troy, Angie, Danielle, and Jana. Also attended the biannual citywide HOA meeting, which was really, really good. So thank you to all the staff that put that together. I want to say congratulations to Angel again for her very long dissertation award that she received. If you want to know the title, just ask Mayor Protem, she can relay that. And I also wanted to say thank you to Shashi for your work, because you've been busy this month with a couple of meetings, the La Quinta Drainage Project, as well as the infrastructure. So thank you so much and your team. Blink Fitness is open, so all those that want to get extra fine before the summer, go check them out. We attended Blink Fitness Ribbon Cutting and Grand Opening right there on Texas Parkway, a beautiful state-of-the-art facility. So congratulations to them. And also, congratulations to Harul Mogul and the PABA organization, who put on the fourth largest, the fourth year, the largest IFtar event in Fort Bend County. Had a pleasure, had the pleasure of going to the classy and sassy birthday celebration for the 70-year-old Dr. Cynthia Hickman. We present her with her milestone recognition for her 70 years with Councilmember Boni. And then in closing, I want to say happy, happy 12th birthday to my little Shyla, who turned 12 on Good Friday. So it was definitely a Good Friday for the Riley family. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. Recognizing District B Councilmember Jeffrey L. Boner.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a monthly HGAC Board meeting. A lot of productive things that go on at our HGAC meetings and definitely continue to try to speak up and, you know, make sure we get the resources that we deserve and need here in Missouri City. Also attended Vicksburg's HOA meeting. I love going there because they're always engaged and lively and have always questions and things that they bring to the table that I pass on to staff, you know? So I appreciate staff for being responsible, responsive to their needs. But it's always good to have engaged communities. Also attended the HOA biannual meeting. Thank you, staff, very informative. And the QR codes and engagement and things that, you know, continue to allow people's voices to be heard are always welcome. Also attended the Fort Bend County Mayor Council Association Dinner with Councilmember Riley. We had the Parks Foundation Special Meeting, where we were able to flesh out and hash out some things and the beginning of a great discussion for the future. I also attended the Blink Fitness Ribbon Cutting. Fitness Ribbon Cutting. I shared with their CEO, who came down, Guy Harkless, that they didn't have to spend all that money to send the message that I needed to work out. That was a huge investment, but I'm welcoming them to the Texas Parkway Cartwright Corridors. Truly a welcomed addition. I also attended the McAllister's Deli Grand Opening, and like Mayor Protem stated, so many people lined up. I think they camped out. People camped out overnight. Well, still camped out. They were there well before the sun came up. So they were there, ready to get that free one-year tea. So that's awesome. And it is kind of addictive tea. I got some. I think I covered the cost of their build out, all the money I spent for me and my family today. Also attended the Fort Bend Exchange Club Awareness Field. And thank you, Mayor Protem, for delivering that proclamation. And also with Councilwoman Riley. Want to say congratulations to the City of Fullerton on their bicentennial celebration that took place about a week or so ago. Also attended Dr. Cynthia Hickman's 70th Birthday Celebration. I was like, 70? Where? You know, she does not look 70 years of age. And then lastly, I just want to give a shout out to my line brothers, the Members of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, meeting your new chapter, where we celebrated our Q-aversary this past, well, actually on Saturday. And so, you know, we definitely had a grand time and always enjoy celebrating, you know, that milestone year. So thank you. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Recognizing District C Councilmember Anthony Marules.
Take a look at Andre there for a minute. First of all, I'm happy Angie's here tonight because it's all about Missouri City Green. And first, I want to say Don and Penny Johnson, congratulations. They won the 2024 Texas Environmental Excellence Award. They've been volunteering for over 20 years. I actually served with Don on parks. My kids actually planted plenty of trees with Don and Penny. And so they're definitely wonderful people and well-deserved award. Highlight Missouri City Green for all their efforts they do for the community. Won an awesome Edible Arbor Fest. It was packed, and it grows every year. They don't stop. So April 27, they're going to shred paper for us. There's a shredding event coming up. And I want to thank Freedom Center Church for volunteering up their property to allow such a great event to occur. Lexington Creek Elementary, like Mayor Protem said, 30 years of excellence there. It was great to see some students of my kids that I did a great job laying in the foundation. And everyone go out to 311 and complain. It's a lie. No, no, we're proud. Thank you, staff, for the hard work, the heavy lift that it takes to transition from C Click Fix to 311. So neighbors and friends, give it a try. Use it accordingly, and good luck with it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Recognizing Councilmember of District D, Floyd Emery.
Thank you. I too would like to recognize Don and Penny Johnson for the great work that they've done over the years with Missouri City Green and anything that was environmentally appealing. They were at the forefront of that, and we're going to, I think, hate to see them not being as actively engaged as they have been in the past, but I'm sure they'll be around. So kudos to them. I also attended the biannual HOA city meeting, and I thought the turnout was good. We had some lively conversations coming from the audience. So I know that City Manager Jones and her staff took some good notes so that we could address the issues of the HOAs. I attended a celebration of life for one of our Quail Valley decorated veterans from the Vietnam era, Joe DeHaron. He, you can't believe the number of decorations and some of the stories that he had to tell as a veteran of the Vietnam conflict. He, like I say, was was a great role model to a number of individuals. And he shared some of his stories with them. So we're going to miss Joe in Quail Valley. I attended the Quail Valley Proud at Missouri City Center Agro and Activity. I know that Quail Valley Proud sponsored it, but they had a big assist from the city center staff. So again, to them, and they had a great number of attendees. And what was most encouraging, a great number of kids, which means that Quail Valley is starting to move down the age spectrum so that we can have continued growth in Quail Valley. And I also attended the edible order, Edible Arbor Trail Event. I think they had over 700 attendees there, and it was well, obviously well populated. And again, thanks to the Parks group for working with Missouri City Green and bringing all of that to our residents. And with that, that's my, I have seven seconds left.
I'll take that.
Which you can have.
All right, thank you. I also had several opportunities to attend multiple events with my colleagues. But one, a few that I would like to mention is Learning Experience on 1092, right there across from our Township Square. There it turned five-year. And then also, we, City of Missouri City, hosted the Metro Multi-Cities Meetings. That was here in the Quail Valley Center. So the board is full, so we have some work to do. We'll be looking forward to meeting with the the board members that's representing multi-cities for us. And I think that's the staff to see if they can set up that meeting sometime in the middle of April to include our our Transportation Committee. And of course, I want to thank City Secretary's Office, along with Parks Foundation President Anthony Snipes, for having that joint parks meeting with City Council that we had here. Also had an opportunity to meet up with Comcast. It's called TeamUp with Fort Bend Promise. There's 50 volunteers that was out there through Comcast that was able to kind of clean up the whole place and be able to build a brand-new playground for kids. So it was a wonderful event, thanks to Comcast TeamUp. And as you heard here before, Blink Fitness is open. They are right there on, I mean, Texas Parkway. And if you have not visited, please go check it out. They are, it's a beautiful facility, and their motto is clean, clean, clean. So they take very pride in that. I had an opportunity to stop by there. Thanks to Missouri City Green and our Parks Department for a wonderful Edible Earth Fest. I know, as you heard here, there's over 700, 800 people. It was packed. So thank you all for doing that. It's a wonderful, great thing. Now, had the opportunity to join Councilmember Marules and Mayor Protem Klausser for a Lexington Creek 30-year anniversary celebration. It was wonderful, especially for Councilmember Marules, who had his kids there. It was wonderful to see a joint effort of having all the past principals and the current one there to join with the community. Lastly, I had the opportunity, just as Councilmember Marules invited the Greek Independence Day that we had here, we were, I was invited to attend on behalf with the Council General of Greece, and to be out there in his facility. And it's a beautiful event. So I want to thank him for this invitation. And McAllister Deli is open. The lines were out the door. I thought it was new iPhone release or Black Friday, but it wasn't. It was McAllister Deli. So please visit. That's in District B. So if you ever want to meet Councilmember Jeffrey L. Boni, McAllister Deli is the place to be.
Every day.
Yeah, every day. And lastly, I do want to, of course, congratulate Angel. I mean, obviously, I know Mayor Protem, the event is coming, I believe it's in May. It's in May. So congratulations, City Manager. So your first year anniversary is done, you get an award. There you go. Awesome. Thank you. I do want to recognize someone who's in the audience, and it is Don Lee. I know you're looking left and right, but yeah, we're talking about you, who's our new community liaison. Please stand. Yes. I think I probably gave the HR director some hard time asking when is his position going to be filled, but we're so excited that you're here. I know that your first day was during the HOA meeting or to that nature, where you were introduced. So we're looking forward to it. We have a great community here, great people. You get to work with some fantastic HOA representatives that you saw at that meeting, but also their management companies and others. So we're looking forward to your insight. And as I would always say, is it's not how it is in Missouri City. It's how you design it to be, right? So make it work. Thank you. That's all I have. Item number 12, our closed executive sessions. The time is 7:31 PM. And City Council will now go into a closed executive session pursuant to section 551.071 and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. We'll be back. The time is 10:01 PM, and the City Council is now back in regular session. With no further business and hearing no objections, this meeting is adjourned at 10:01 PM. All right, thank you, everyone.